Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate the interest in the change of government. And so, I would like to call to order, thank you very much, I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Regular Council Meeting of December 10, 2018. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Mullen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Rob Reiner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 5, 2018.
Thank you. Public comments on item two, public comments for items not on the agenda will be heard at the end of the meeting. And we're on to Commission Committee, City Manager Updates, City Manager?
Good evening. It's so nice to see so many people here, not just from Malibu, but from far and wide. I feel like I'm at a Contract Cities reunion, so welcome all. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our new council members, Councilmember Pearson and Karen Farrar coming in. I'm very excited to work with both of you, and I'm very sad to say goodbye to my dear friends Lou and Laura, but I'm sure we'll still be seeing you as the podium is always open to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now we're on to Councilmember Lou. Would you like to take first shot?
Sure. I'll save my closing comments for later, and I'll just tell you what I've been doing, since it's been a while since we actually had this opportunity to discuss it. I want you to know that I attended National League of Cities in downtown Los Angeles as co-chair of the Community and Economic Development Federal Advocacy Committee, and we passed my resolution asking for help from the federal government on sober living homes issue that we've been dealing with. And now it is a top priority for the National League of Cities and sponsored by 19,000 cities across the country. And there is some good news on that front. Thank you. Thank you. There is some good news on that front that's related to it. The city of Costa Mesa won their federal lawsuit just last week, and which includes things like permitting from local governments and 650-foot distancing requirements, et cetera, et cetera. It will probably be appealed to the Ninth District, but we're kind of confident that it's going to survive. So, that's really excellent news for all of us, because it's good not only for, obviously, our residents, but really more importantly, for the patients, because this situation has gotten really uncontrollable, and it is completely unfair to the people that are, you know, working so hard to get better. Laura and I attended our last PCH Task Force meeting as councilmembers. I think we're allowed to go as people now. I attended the Emily Shane Foundation Butterfly Release, which is an incredible organization that the Shanes have just taken a tragedy and turned it into such an incredible positive thing. I attended a Contract Cities Executive Board meeting, and I feel like I'm at another one tonight, because there's so many Executive Board members here. We also attended the All Cities Holiday Reception at Union Station, Laura and I, and was sponsored by the LA Division of the League and California Contract Cities Association. And I was presented with a framed copy of, or the original bill that was signed by Governor Brown for AB 3162 that we just got passed. And it was a very moving moment for me, and it was, I was incredibly grateful, not only for this wonderful thing that I can actually hang on a wall, but for all the support and friendship I have had from both those organizations for such a long time. And I really encourage the new councilmembers to get more involved with the League of California Cities, the LA Division of the League of Cities, and California Contract Cities Association. These are important agencies, and without their help, none of this would have happened. So, I thank you all very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou. Laura?
I guess I wasn't prepared to talk about the last month has been a very difficult time, and I'll save my comments for later, but I did have my last library, LA County Library Commission meeting, and hoping that we will be able to get somebody from Malibu on that to continue the good work and represent Malibu on the Library Commission for all of LA County. Malibu puts in a lot of money for out throughout the entire county, and I would really hope that one of the new councilmembers will take that on. I also had my last Southern California Association of Governments meeting, where I represent our entire Council of Governments, our other four cities, and also our Council of Governments meeting with, which is called the COG. And the other thing I wanted to thank our Congressman Lou, because he has taken up some of the mantle of our pesticides issues. For those of you that don't know, we worked very closely with the League, and there are representatives of the League of California Cities here that I want to thank, and got a resolution passed to try to allow every city and every county and every school district in the state of California to be able to make their own decisions about banning pesticides. But right now, we can't do that, because it's what's called preempted in the state of California. But we did get the support of Contract Cities and the League of California Cities, and this city and a number of other cities up and down the state to do a resolution for that. And then, I went to Washington and spoke to a lot of the local staff for congresspeople and our senators. And because the farm bill that they're voting on in Washington, they put a little rider in there that would take away all of the rights of any city, county, or school district to make their own decisions all across the country. So, Congressman Lou has taken that up, and has been writing letters, and has, is working with his colleagues in the House of Representatives to make sure that that does not go through. So, I want to do, I know Joey's here representing him tonight, but I did want to get that on the public record, something I've been working on. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Skylar?
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's been a very difficult time for our community, and I'm looking forward to welcoming our new councilmembers, and should I say, councilmember and Mayor Protem, onboard. And I'm just grateful to call this community my home and be there for my neighbors in my community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Skylar? Jefferson?
Thank you, Rick. Thursday, I'll be attending the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, representing Malibu and the COG, which is the 101 corridor of cities of Hidden Hills, Agora, Calabasas, Westlake. And the discussion will be, from my point, will be the restoration of Malibu Lagoon, trying to get Third Point Break back. And the other agenda items I'm going to be pushing forward are the restoration of the bridge at Trancas. So, those are local things that need to be taken care of, and the Santa Monica Bay Restoration is kind of the guiding light through that. They're the environmental watchdogs for our area, and they do a pretty effective job. That'll be Thursday. After that, anybody who wants to contact me about what went on there, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. I attended, I was invited to attend a LA County Mayor's Group Symposium with, what's that?
Convening.
Convening, excuse me, with Fire Chief Osby, as well as the chief from the Los Angeles City Fire Department, and myself, to do a panel discussion on lessons learned from the Woolsey Fire. And it was well-attended by mayors from all over LA County, and it was a very good discussion. And everyone was keenly interested in everything that went on during the Woolsey Fire, and there were some great ideas that came about. And I also, on Saturday, attended a community meeting by a grassroots organization right here in our town, in Dukes, and had a chance to meet the new sheriff, Villanueva. And there were a lot of people, very well-attended from the community, a lot of ideas, a lot of comments and lessons learned, and I, grassroots community interest in doing things in the wake of the Woolsey Fire and lessons learned from that. And I had a brief opportunity to speak with the new sheriff, and he made some comments, which I think were to the point. And he showed a very good interest in also applying lessons learned and serving the people of Los Angeles County. So, that was good. Although I'm not going to be the mayor anymore, I'm going to suggest to the new mayor that, not now, but of course, on the next council meeting that we put together a task force, primarily composed of people who can address the major areas of concern from the fire, those major areas that I discussed the last time, having to do with the fire, the law enforcement, the evacuation, the noticing, the preparation, the water company, communication, communication infrastructure, et cetera, to take the lessons learned and analyze them, and the actions of the city during this time, and make changes that put the city in a more durable and proactive and well-prepared position for the future. And that's just my intention to request out of the new council when it comes up. And that is my comments. Okay, now we're on to the consent calendar. Does anybody have any items they would like to put on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to presentations for outgoing councilmembers. And before we get started on that, I'm going to ask, when I call your name, you can come on up to the podium. We'll have a microphone for you, and you can read your particular presentation that you would like to present to the outgoing councilmembers. Let me make some brief comments, use a little mayoral prerogative, and just say, "Thank you." Not going to get too emotional here, because that's always embarrassing, but I really appreciate Lou and Laura taking me under their wing as the new guy and showing them the ropes. And whenever, even before I got on the council and during my time here, they were very helpful, not only in giving me guidance here at the city council, but outside the walls up in Sacramento, which I think are probably the most valuable lessons that we can learn from you, Lou and Laura. And I'm trying to pick up the mantle or the baton and carry it forward. And I'm looking for the two new members of our community to also join me in that effort, because I think it's super-important that we be well-represented in Sacramento and beyond, in Washington DC. So, thank you very much. Let me get my thanks in upfront. Okay, the first person to make a presentation will be Mayor Linda Northrup, Councilmember Elise Buckley-Weber, and former Councilmember William Kohler from the city of Agora Hills.
Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be here tonight and to really pay tribute to two of the most dedicated, amazing public servants that I've had the privilege of coming across, meeting at various events over the last several years that I've been in office. And we just can't say enough about the contributions you've both made to this community, but not only this community, our region. Lou, you're up there today, you know, still pushing forward initiatives with the sober living issue. You are, come on, yeah, good. We'd love that.
We just need to be stage backed.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Well, just, you know, I was with you at the National League of Cities, with you at the California League of Cities, and it's just been such an inspiration to see, you know, how you work with people, how you bring people together, and how you're moving things forward, as I said, that not only affect the city of Malibu, but in the end, make Malibu a leader for the entire region. And so, I don't, I've got to open them up. And see, I did. I opened up the right one. Lou, from the city of Agora Hills, with appreciation for your Lou, from the city of Agora Hills, with appreciation for your years of service.
Wow.
And I'm going to turn to, you're welcome. And Laura, a memory of my life is screaming at the Monday Night Rams game, when they were honoring first responders, and we all took a moment to, you know, honor the folks that had done such hard work to save so many people in our community and their, and their homes. But you have done so much on environmental issues, and supporting the arts, and all the things that make our area such a wonderful place to live. And as we rebuild and come through this period, we know we can count on both of you to continue to give us your great ideas and your great energy. And you will be missed, but we know you're not going to be gone, and we know you're still going to be helping us all as we move forward in this next chapter. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Buckley-Weber to say a few words.
Just a couple of words, because I know you have a packed house and a long evening, but it's been such a pleasure to work with both of you. You always come into every meeting with spirit, with good ideas, you've been a great asset to the city of Malibu and to the COG. So thank you for all the work that you've done, and we look forward to seeing you around, and hopefully you'll help us with, you'll, I'm sure you will always be around to give us your good ideas, and we look forward to it. So good luck to both of you, and we wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next is Councilmember Mary Sue Maurer at the city of Calabasas.
I first just want to take a minute to send my greetings to the people of Malibu, from the people of Calabasas. It's been a really tough month, and we shared a really bad experience together, a frightening and devastating experience, and we will rebuild and be stronger for that, so hang in there. This is very hard, these two are so dear. You have no idea how they have represented you, you got a hint of it, how they represented you in the region and in Malibu. They took what was important to Malibu and tried to push it across the region. It really was beyond what you were expected to do, and beyond what you had to do. You set a bar for the rest of your council on how you can make a difference, a big difference. And I'm so proud of both of you. I remember when you came in here in the audience, and we're being sworn in, and you were greenish. And look at you now, you, you sound and you speak, and you've done so much. I'm really proud of you. So on behalf of the city of Calabasas, Lou Lamont, who uses his personality, his directness, his never-give-up spirit, you have accomplished so much, and congratulations to you, my dear. And Laura, I think many of you know that Laura has a background in, as a therapist, and she uses those keen skills of listening, and the ability to find the kernels of truth, or the kernels of new ideas, better ideas, and moving her ideas forward with your input. You're very lucky to have such a professional and excellent listener, so, wow, you've done a lot. Congratulations, I hope you keep working, and we would like to invite you to move to Calabasas.
Mary Sue Maurer gave me the first piece of advice I ever got as an elected official. It was, I was elected for an hour. And I said, "Do you have any advice?" He said, "Yeah, read the packet." It was the best advice I ever got.
And actually, before I decided to run, I went and visited you at the new Calabasas City Hall, and said, "Tell me about this, what am I getting myself into?" And you were very accommodating, and really gave me a lot of good advice, so thank you, Mary Sue.
Okay, next is Councilmember Tony Vasquez from the city of Santa Monica. Maybe he got stuck in traffic. Okay, we'll move on to Jeffrey Prang, Los Angeles County Assessor. And Jeffrey will be followed by Joey Appadaca.
So I'm here to add a little excitement to these proceedings, in a way that can only be accomplished by the county property tax assessor. But I'm thrilled to be here, to be able to recognize my good friends Laura and Lou. The first thing I want to say is, today's really a good example of why term limits are such a bad idea. Lou and Laura have been such effective leaders of this, of this community, and throughout the region. And as a former councilmember myself, I could tell you, it's about this time in your career as an elected official, when you really start becoming effective what you do. And it's unfortunate that you won't have the opportunity to continue doing it, but what you have done has been simply remarkable. You are two of the most well-regarded municipal leaders in this county, and I think that is, could be attested to by the number of local elected officials who are here today to, to say thank you, and to, to see you off. For the people of Malibu, if they don't, if they're not aware of how really effective and how much you've had an impact on local government in LA County and throughout the state of California, I just wanted to emphasize that you have. The people of the city should be very proud of you, and the work and the contributions that you, that you made to this community. And I'm thrilled to be, be here today to add my voice to what is a, certain to be a chorus of praise, on behalf of you and the service that you provided to this great city. And I know that the work that you've done is going to be particularly important as the city recovers from the disasters that you've, disasters that you've endured over the last several weeks. So I brought for each of you a proclamation from the assessor's office, for Laura, I'm not going to read them, suffice them to say, they say lots of nice things about you. But on behalf of the assessor's office, congratulations, I recommend that you take copies of these, make a copy of it, and put it with your tax bill. And if you weren't paying, and if you weren't paying attention, today is tax day, I brought envelopes, but congratulations, and thank you. Please.
And next is Joey Appadaca from Senior Field, Senior Field Representative for U.S. Congressman Ted Lieu.
I never write remarks down, but for this, I had to. It's very, this is the most difficult time that this community has gone through since, since its founding. But it certainly is right to, to take some time out and honor these two legendary figures in the history of city politics in Malibu, starting with Councilwoman Rosenthal, one Your dedication to your community is very difficult to match. Your impact is felt in such a wide range of areas, from education, to environmental protection, to the arts. I don't know how one city leader could be so many things to so many organizations. I really think, as amazing as a community that Malibu is, I think that she would have done it in any community she was placed in. I think it really is just in your nature to be so hard-working in so many areas. So thank you. Excuse me, I'm a little under the weather. Councilman Lamont, since I began working for, for the congressman of Malibu, which was the previous congressman, Congressman Henry Waxman, you have certainly been a trusted voice and counsel on key issues. I know many issues have many aspects, and many are, in Malibu especially, are very, very localized. And both members that I've worked for have always been keenly interested in your perspective. So, so thank you. And Congressman Lou thanks you, he's had these certificates prepared for each of you, they largely say the same thing. So, in recognition and celebration of your remarkable tenure of dedicated public service to the citizens of Malibu, and with sincere appreciation for your remarkable commitment to bettering your community, thank you very much.
Next will be Jeremy Wolfe Field, Representative for State Senator Henry Stern, and Josh Kirpey, District Director for State Assemblymember Richard Bloom.
Hello, my name's Josh Kirpey, from Assemblymember Richard Bloom's office. I'm here with Jeremy Wolfe, from Senator Henry Stern's office. We just came to say hello to the entire council, and Assemblymember Bloom couldn't be here this evening, he's in India on a legislative trip, but he did text me just this morning, well, this evening, as I was driving here, morning in his time, and I just want to read a short segment to you. This is from Assemblymember Bloom. "As one who worked with them as a fellow local elected, and more recently as their assembly member, I can say without reservation that Lou and Laura embody the best qualities of the local elected. They are truly dedicated to the public service, listening carefully to diverse points of view, while selflessly serving the community they love." And I just wanted to say that I agree with the, the assembly member, and working with, yeah, yeah, better. Working with the two of you on the PCH Task Force has just been amazing, you two have been amazing leaders and participants, active members, and it's been great working with you, and we will always have a seat for normal people at our, at our task force. And I wanted to pass this on to Jeremy.
Thank you. Hi, so I'm Jeremy Wolfe, and I work for State Senator Henry Stern, Malibu's own, and he apologized that he couldn't be here today, but on behalf of the senator, just want to thank you guys for your distinguished service. In this role with the senator, I've been able to work with Malibu folks, and you guys since day one have been helpful, picked up my phone calls, and really served as role models, and now are friends. So I really appreciate it, and I think the city of Malibu was lucky to have you guys at, in this really difficult time, with your leadership to help bring the community through this difficult time. So I will miss you, love you guys, and thank you so much. So on behalf of Assemblymember Ben Allen and Senator Stern, we have these resolutions that you might have seen before, but, so we'll take a photo.
And next will be Dr. Ben Droudi, Superintendent, Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District. And Dr. Droudi will be followed by Louise Jaffe, Santa Monica College Board Member.
Councilmembers, thank you for having me. Lou and Laura, it's been, it's been a ride. So the one thing I'm going to say is that sometimes, you know, you see elected officials in, in doing their work, and off, so often that you guys are in the firing line. And I've been, I've been to plenty of meetings, whether it be here in different places, the courage that you, you guys displays, elected officials, needs to be, needs to be restated over and over and over. You know, I'm sure you don't get paid for this. And it's coming from being in charge of the school district, or working closer with you, I've seen your efforts, and your love for this community, and your advocacy for this community, and your involvement with the whole month process, the meetings I've had with you. I mean, you guys have helped a shepherd, a movement forward, towards establishing a district for, for the Malibu schools. So I know you've set us on the path, I'm going to commit it to working with you all to get closer and closer towards that, towards that time. I just do appreciate you guys' involvement, and I appreciate your advocacy, and, and I appreciate your, your guidance. It's coming new here, and like I said, having to understand Malibu, and it's a pretty complicated place. But you guys helped guide me through, through a lot of conversations and things that I needed to do, so I do appreciate that. Yeah, thank you, thank you. This is Laura and Lou. And I'm here on behalf of the school board as well, I'm sure Mr. Foster will come say a few things, but the rest of them, I told them I would come represent them as well.
Thank you, and thank you for your, your just listening to us. We appreciate that.
Next is Louise Jaffe, from Santa Monica, Santa Monica College Board Member, and Louise will be followed by Scott Houston.
So I'm a trustee at Santa Monica College. Our superintendent president, Dr. Jeffrey, wasn't able to come, she's out of town for a funeral. But we are joined by Don Gerard, Senior Director, Government Relations and Institutional Communications. Don, if you want to stand, and Sherry Davis, the co-director of the Public Policy Institute. And Laura and Lou know these people very well, because they've been working tirelessly for years and years and years to make sure that we can bring a Santa Monica College campus here to Malibu, and we shall. We came because we wanted to thank you, and acknowledge you as colleagues and partners for some wonderful work, and also because we want to show our support for the, what you've been through recently, and for the entire Malibu community. And you've led always with honor, integrity, and excellence, which is a good way to do that. And my colleague Barry Snow.
Thanks, thank you. You know, the two of you have been such incredible educated leaders for Santa Monica and Malibu, and personal friends of mine, and I really appreciate it. So as Chairman of the Board for the Trustee of Santa Monica College, or the past board, I just got off. But anyway, I really appreciate what you've done, and we, on behalf of the college, our partnership with respect to this new project is going to be amazing, and I know you'll be part of it. Laura, we've been sitting together, PTA, for the last, what, I don't want to tell them how many, 20 years? So on my, on behalf of Santa Monica College, I want to give you your congratulations for all the work that you've done for us. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you two, because I sat on the JPA for, well, eight and a half years, or, and to be able to finally have Santa Monica College coming here, and a sheriff station, substation, is really wonderful news, so, thank you.
And next will be Scott Houston, Director of the West Basin Municipal Water District, Division Four, and Scott will be followed by Tessa Charnofsky.
Well, first of all, council, thank you so much for having all of us, and I'm glad to see so many people who have come out this evening to pay their respects to Laura and Lou. And one thing I do want to mention is how much this tragic circumstance has affected so many people across the region, including the West Basin family. That being said, our attorney who represents our water district, Steve O'Neill, he lost his house up here in Malibu, as well as some other friends in my circle, too. So it's far and wide that there were many people impacted, and I want to let you know that. When it comes to Laura and Lou, first of all, when I decided I was going to run for the water board seat four years ago, I was put in touch with Laura and Lou through a mutual friend, and both of them met with me, talked with me, understood what I was running for, this seat that a lot of people don't quite understand what it does. But they both had my back, and they supported me in this community, and really got the information out about who I was, and why the water district was so important to Malibu. So I can't thank them enough for that, first and foremost. I think all the things that have been said, I completely agree with. Both of these two have been huge champions of the city of Malibu, whether it's locally, regionally, up in Sacramento, out in DC. And the two things I'll mention is, of course, Laura, you know, you championed the Malibu's One Water Festival back in 2016, which was an amazing event, and I hope that maybe someday we can do something like that again. But also with Laura, I always knew that when it comes to water and the environment, she was a huge advocate and champion. I could always count on you to help me get the word out in the community on water issues and what we're doing at West Basin on behalf of the residents of Malibu. And then secondly, of course, Lou, so involved in so many organizations across the region, including Contract Cities, and your service as president, and, you know, allowed me actually to speak on a panel during your tenure, so I really appreciate that. But, you know, you both were so well-regarded in this region, the community is blessed to have you, and I hope that you'll continue doing great work across our region, serving not only the residents of Malibu, but Los Angeles County. So thank you. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
And next is Tessa Charnowski, District Director for Los Angeles County Supervisor Sheila Kuhl. And Tessa will be followed by Jim Thorson.
Hello, my name is Tessa Charnowski. I have not had the pleasure to meet you before, but I, from hearing all of the outpouring of love and hearing you both speak about the outstanding work you do, I am thrilled to be here to represent the supervisor and to thank you for your incredible years of service, and also to acknowledge the community for the challenges that we've all been facing. I actually started right as the fires were ending, so this is all we've been doing night and day. But thank you once again, and I hope to work with you. It doesn't sound like you're going away anywhere, you're just stepping down from the council, but you'll be around, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
All right, next is Jim Thorson, City Manager of the beautiful city of Cherry Hills, Colorado, and he is the former City Manager of the city of Malibu. And Jim will be followed by Dan Carrick.
If I can get this to work. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council.
Sounds familiar.
Sounds familiar. It's been quite a while since I roamed the halls here and, and sat in this council chambers, but it's good to see, you know, a lot of friends and good people here, so it's nice to be back. First time, yeah. So before I begin, I just want to say, you know, my heart really goes out to Malibu during these tough times. There's a lot of losses, and I drove around a little bit this afternoon, and it's really devastating to see, but it's, you know, Malibu's resilient, they're tough. You guys will come back, and it'll be better than ever. So with that, on to better things. I know all the secrets. So first of all, Lou Lamont. When Lou and Laura both came on to City Council, they were just bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, and as any good government bureaucrat, we tried to kick that out right away. It didn't work. They, these two are tenacious, and they've done such a wonderful job. First of all, Lou, I've not seen anyone work harder on an issue than you have with the drug rehab proliferation that was going on. Your goal was to create a new law that would put a little common sense and local control over existing drug rehab facilities. You first built a small coalition of the local leaders out here. Hi, Christine. When, when that wasn't enough, you, you went statewide. You joined the Contract Cities. You've got more and more people involved in your agenda. You built that statewide coalition, and it worked. And after eight years of your leadership on this issue, and a lot of late-night dinners, phone calls, Assembly Bill 3162 was passed, and what an achievement, not only for the residents of Malibu, but for the entire state. And what I can say is congratulations and job well done. And Laura, no, I'm not going to give any secrets away. You two have worked tirelessly, tirelessly for this city, and I know how many hours you've put in, and how much dedication you've spent on this. And certainly, if you were paid minimum wage, you'd be a very rich woman right now. I can say this, that as a, you brought forward so many great ideas to this city. Everything from your leadership on the Library Committee, where we now have a speaker series, which is robust and great, so many residents have enjoyed that. Your environmental efforts have been never-ending, helped preserve our land and our oceans, and of course, your work with the school is still ongoing, and I'm guessing that you probably won't quit that. So the one thing personally I will say is that, the one project that I really look at was the restroom bed over on Canaan. And I know that saved at least one life, if not many more, and so that is your, for me, a long-lasting tribute to what you've done on this council. And you brought it forward and got it done, so congratulations. And with, with that, I'm going to say, job well done as well. Excellent. I brought something from Colorado, as most of you know. We moved to Colorado a couple of years ago, something they're getting famous for. It's not marijuana. No, disappointed that they've been making a little bit of, a little bit of whiskey. So I brought you something that's very useful, instead of something to hang on a wall or put in your box of mementos. It's something you can actually put to good use. So with that, I'll just say this, that when you do open it, hopefully you'll have a great sense of pride in how both of you made life in Malibu better, and how you've had a small ripple effect on the world. So with that, congratulations and Godspeed.
And next is Dan Carrick, Deputy Executive Director and Legislative Director, and Jeff Kiernan, Regional Public Affairs Manager, League of California Cities. And they'll be followed by Marcel Rodart.
Thank you all again. I'm Dan Carrick, the League's Legislative Director, and there's been a lot of talk tonight, and it's such great, to second everything I've heard so far tonight on what great people we have here, and all the contributions they've made locally. But I want to talk a little bit more about some of the work they've, they've done that really has impacted cities across the state. And I'll give a couple of examples. They, not only, they serve here, obviously, and all the work you do for your council and other, maybe commissions and other things locally, but it takes a lot of time out of people's lives to get involved in an organization like the League of Cities, to go to policy committee meetings, take time out of their day, their, their work, to contribute in other ways. Lou was a member of our Housing Community Economic Development Policy Committee, where all of these issues related to legislation are discussed. I'm going to give a couple of examples of work that he did. One's already been discussed a lot. He and I talked a lot about it, I think, you know, going back probably seven, eight years in terms of that issue. And what, what a great example to tenacity, and just hard work, and, and finding a way. In Sacramento, if, if, you know, if you hear the word "no" once and you stop, I guess a lot of laws wouldn't happen. That could be a good thing, actually. But this person probably heard "no" about 50 times and kept going, so I just think that was a great example. Another one is, there's always challenges that we face in Sacramento, trying to defend local authority, trying to defend the ability of communities like Malibu to, to make their own decisions. And one example was a bill that was going to limit the ability of cities to contract, and that was a very serious bill, and, and you were up there in the hallways, and it was a big fight, and we were able to preserve cities' authority there. So thank you for all, all of your work, and I'm going to miss you battling, because I could certainly count on you. Laura served as also, was just most recently, the Chair of our Environmental Quality Committee, looking at all the environmental quality issues of the state. And Laura, you mentioned up there the pesticide issue, and I told you when I got out of my car, I heard an owl up on the hill, and it was the rodenticide issue that was part of the resolution that she brought forward. Well, I don't think the League of California Cities would be really working hard on rodenticides if, if it wasn't for you and the efforts to bring that resolution forward. And so that, there was, as a, good, as, as the, I heard the owl, he's up there. As the, as the Legends Director, you get to sign off on expenses, and one of my lobbyists had, they had coffee with somebody talking about rodenticide, so that would not have happened. Thank you for your work there. And the other thing is, especially with this community and everything that's gone through, is there was a big conference committee this year on wildfires and, and, and all sorts of issues related to that. That went through your committee, and one of the concerns certainly cities had was, was not taking on more liability for wildfires that we didn't cause. Anyway, that, that turned out well for, for local governments. I'm sure there'll be more next year. But, so anyway, these plaques say, just talk about your contributions, and, and basically recognize your work, not only through the League and its policy committees, and have Jeff say something about the divisions, but really, again, I think the most for me, it's thank you for your efforts on behalf of all cities to advance the quality of life for California city residents. I think you've done much more than, than just the benefit for the city of Malibu. So thank you.
And quickly, Jeff Kiernan with the League of California Cities. It's, I'm the local staffer here for the city of Malibu, and 24 other cities in the county of Los Angeles, but both of you have been absolutely one of the most visible members of city councils that I work with in LA County over the last several years that we've gotten to know each other. The Los Angeles County Division events usually are not very close to Malibu, but you guys are always, were always there, and it's wonderful to have that dedication that you're, you're willing to go out to downtown Los Angeles, or Cerritos, or Downey, or wherever the meetings were, you guys were always there. So I wanted to, to say thank you very much, and be here with Dan Carrick, and just present these two plaques to you. You're, you've done wonderful things for your community, you've done wonderful things for the cities and for the Los Angeles County Division, so thank you both for being my friend.
And next is, excuse me, Marcel Rodart, Executive Director, California Contract Cities, and Marcel will be followed by Mayor Gustavo Camacho.
Where's the guy from Ted Lieu's office? If I get sick, I'm going to send you my doctor's bills. I saw you coughing on the mic earlier. I just want to say a few words, both to, to Lou and Laura. They've both been very active in our association. Our association is the little brother, little sister to the Leagues, who represent cities statewide. Our, our little association, our family, represents 76 cities, mostly in LA County, but we get a lot of stuff done. And we get a lot of stuff done because of folks like Laura and Lou. A lot, Lou, but, but Laura, too. Laura's very active in our association. What Dan was talking about earlier, you know, we were up in Sacramento last year, getting yelled at by some lobbyists because they didn't like that we were advocating against their bill. Lobbyists don't typically lose, or I would say, unions that have a lot of money don't typically lose in Sacramento. This time, they did. We won, and it was because of folks like Lou that we took up there and just let them yell at us in the rotunda. So those kind of battle wounds, and my short tenure as the Executive Director, are the kind of stuff that Laura and Lou do behind the scenes that a lot of the residents don't see. AB 1250, 3162, as, as everyone's been mentioning, huge wins for not just the association, the League, and California Contract Cities, but for the city of Malibu. So I have a couple of things that you'll put in a box with the rest of the stuff after today, for each of you. Maybe you can put your hot pots and pans on these. There are California Contract Cities tile, one for Laura. It just has your name. We didn't write anything on it, because you're probably not going to read it, anyway. It has your name and the dates that you were in office here in Malibu, so I have those for you. We give these to our legislators when we visit in Sacramento. They're kind of cool little keepsakes and stuff. You can put it on a desk or something like that. And I have a special presentation tonight for Lou. I want to just, real quick, because I know you guys are getting tired of listening to everybody talk, but I was, I was a council member of Norwalk before I became the Executive Director of the Contract Cities Association. My predecessor, Sam Olivito, who's here tonight, was, let's give him a round of applause. He was the Executive Director of the California Contract Cities Association for 30-plus years, almost 32, 33 years. The association's been around for 60. I'm the third Executive Director. So it's a pretty long tenure. And in 2016, I was working for Homeland Security. I was a council member. I wasn't really happy with Homeland Security, and an opportunity came along to become the Executive Director of the association. Lou is the incoming president, and I'll tell you, since then, I owe him a huge debt of gratitude because he changed my life. So I have a special gift for you, Lou. I didn't get you anything, Laura. Yours was illegal to bring into the building, apparently, so it's in the car. Thanks, Reba. So I know Lou may or may not be a Yankees fan, so we got him a jersey with his name on the back, and I used number 16 because 16 was the year that I became the Executive Director of the Contract Cities Association. So it may not be a significant number for you, but maybe when you look at it, it was for me, so maybe every time you look at that 16, you'll think of me.
And next will be Mayor Gustavo Camacho, City of Pico Rivera, and past President of California Contract Cities Association. Not here, okay. Moving right along to Nicole Taylor, Chief Business Officer, Pepperdine University. And then she will be followed by Lindsay Horvath, City of West Hollywood.
I am Nicole. I serve as Pepperdine University's Chief Business Officer, and on behalf of Pepperdine, our President Andy Benton, our Executive Vice President Gary Hansen, I am honored to be here to join so many to say thank you for all of you, for all you have done. It is just a pleasure to be here amongst so many who are recognizing you and who are presenting proclamations to you in honor of your service. In addition to celebrating your exemplary leadership and your representation of this community, which I know both to have been done with grace and integrity, may I say, specific to Pepperdine, Lou, you have helped us in a number of occasions, and I know that your support of the youth in this community and with Pepperdine, including judging our most favorite song fest at Pepperdine. Yes, and we love you for doing it, as well as participating in other events like the 9/11 event and others that have been hosted on our campus. We owe you a measure of gratitude, and we thank you. And Laura, you have represented issues for sustainability and protected natural resources in a way that has been an encouragement to our university, and also to specifically our Center for Sustainability, and so we greatly appreciate you. So behalf, on behalf of our university and all of our leadership, I just want to say thank you, and we wish you the best in your next endeavors.
And next is Lindsay Horvath, City of West Hollywood.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of our City of West Hollywood. We're a great fan of both of you and deeply grateful for the many years of service that you've given. When I told someone at City Hall today that I was coming to give proclamations to Lou and Laura, they said, why would they want proclamations from the City of West Hollywood? They're already the super couple of all super couples, and they already have the most-watched hour of television, daytime television in all of history. And I said, no, no, that's Luke and Laura. This is Lou and Laura from Malibu, and I am deeply grateful for your friendship, the support that you've offered, the mentorship that you've offered, and the many ways that you've supported me personally and our community as a whole. Laura, you may not remember, but when you were first running, I was actually in leadership of NWPC LA West Side. That may be funny to some people, because they probably think I'm not even old enough to be on the city council, but I, I was so excited to know that a strong, intelligent, capable, and confident woman would be running in Malibu. And I've looked to your example these many years and learned from you in ways I'm so proud to know and to have grown from your example. So thank you for all that you've done and all, and the ways that you have been a support to me personally. And Lou, thank you for believing in my creativity. I really don't always believe in myself, but the fact that you let me write a Dr. Seuss rhyme to represent all of the cities of Contract City, Contract Cities, was pretty fun. But you have also encouraged me, I think, every opportunity that's come forward, you've encouraged me to take on leadership roles and to grow in ways that I never could have imagined. And so the belief that you've had in me personally, and the way that you've supported our community, we certainly say thank you for your many years of service and hope that you won't be strangers. And also, Lou, on behalf of the City of Lakewood, which invented the Lakewood Plan, which was the start of California Contract Cities, this is also for you in recognition of your leadership and of our organization. So thank you so much to both of you, and we wish you all the best. So, thank you so much to both of you, and we wish you all the best in what's to come.
Thank you.
And I will be resenting for a couple of cities that couldn't make it. Did Councilmember Tony Vasquez show up? Nope? Okay, hang on.
He is my boss in my other line of work, so.
Well, thank you. Can I actually have some guests with me? We have our local battalion chief, our labor representative, and our lifeguard chiefs with me. So, actually, we just conducted a fire department meeting.
Yes, it's fantastic.
But anyway, my name is Darryl Osby, and I'm the Fire Chief of the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And actually, this date's been on my calendar for a moment, but now, and it predated the Woodley incident. So, I would be remiss if I didn't bring that up, and I'm somewhat humble, and it's really a sobering moment to even be here because of that incident. But I was just thinking about some quotes from Martin Luther King. And one of those quotes was about leadership. And he said, you know, the true test of a leader is really when they're in times of challenge. And I think that incident really tested us, and I really want to thank you for your support. I just want to say to the citizens that are here that may have lost homes, that our deepest thoughts go out to you. From the perspective of the Fire Department, we had all hands on deck, and we did the best that we could. I know the mayor talked about lessons learned moving forward, and we're definitely gonna work, partner with the city to make sure that we clean the city, that we continue to protect the city, and rebuild the city. But on a personal note, if I can say, Lieu and Laura, because I've been the Fire Chief now for eight years, and I saw you've been on the council for eight years. And I represent 60 cities, and I really don't know many names in most councils that I represent. But I know yours. And I know that I've heard of some amazing things as it relates to the leadership here in Malibu. I don't get to Malibu a lot, but I do see it all my conferences, and I can say that your leadership and your contributions have served your city well and really exceed to really represent the entire region. So, on behalf of the Los Angeles County Fire Department, we really want to thank you for your leadership, your representation, all that you've done for the city, all that you've done for the region, and well wishes for the rest of your endeavors. So, thank you very much.
Okay. I'm sorry. And actually, we have some certificates of appreciation for your efforts. So, Lieu.
Mayor Napolitano from Manhattan Beach. Are you here? You are. Good. Are there any other presenters before I pick up those who couldn't attend?
Mark Warnock.
Okay, and Mark Warnock from Lamita. Here you go.
Thank you very much. Mark Warnock from the city of Lamita, too. Steve Napolitano from the city of Manhattan Beach. What is the mayor of Manhattan Beach doing here tonight? First of all, we stand with you as a community, and we did stand with you. We sent an engine and a fire crew up here to help out in the cause, and we will always do that as needed going forward. Anything we can do for you, we will. Having said that, I see Kristi here, another fellow Manhattan Beach resident. I guess we could have car pulled, but just, the bad thing about being almost last is that it's all been said. The good thing about being last is it's all been said. For these two, so for that, I'm not gonna direct my comments to them. I'm gonna direct my comments to the newly electeds who have been patiently waiting here to take their seats and to say, this is your challenge here. It's your challenge to have all these great people from all the surrounding communities come up after your tenure and say great things about you, to do the level of work that these two did, and represent not just the people of Malibu in their own city, but way beyond that. And that's what you've heard over and over again, is their regional presence, and it matters. It makes a difference. It makes a difference in the lives here, makes a difference in the lives of people in the county and across the state. So, on behalf of the city of Manhattan Beach, we want to present you, Laura, with these tokens of appreciation that are also double as trivets for your hot plates. You know, all my lines were taken, all the jokes were taken. Lindsey took my Luke and Laura joke. They're just, it hurts. It's a little hurtful, but I appreciate your patience. Congratulations on all your great work, and most of all, for these folks to know, you're friends. You're friends to all of us, and that's the most important thing. You're good people, and you're friends, and you got a lot done. So again, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Mayor, city council, city manager, Reva, and city attorney, Kristi Hogan, who happens to be our city attorney in Lamita, too. So you are very fortunate, have a great city attorney and a great city manager in Reva. My name is Mark Warnock. I'm council member from the city of Lamita. And also with us here tonight is Handy Fangieri from the city of Hermosa Beach as well, so I want to recognize Handy for being here. The reason why I say Handy, and Mayor Pat Fury from Torrance couldn't be here because he's actually swearing in some folks at the Torrance School Board tonight. So otherwise, he would have been here, too. And I mentioned Handy and Pat because we had the opportunity to go to DC when we were all mayors. Because as you know, we rotate the mayors, and Torrance, they don't. But we had the opportunity to go to the National League of, actually, the US Conference of Mayors, right on the cusp of Donald Trump becoming president, which was a very interesting time, and I won't go there. But we had the opportunity to learn a lot at the US Conference of Mayors, and our wives got to hang out together. So my wife says hello to you, Lorraine. Let me just say a couple of things about, and I know it's been said, but you know, these two individuals are not only great elected officials, but they're great human beings, and they're great family members, they're great role models to their families as well. And I've seen it in action. Personally, I'm gonna miss both of you because you've been mentors to me. Lieu, you've allowed me to climb up the ranks of Contract Cities to become president in two years, so your legacy will continue. But I do want to say to Laura, I got to first see you in action with Lindsey at the Contract Cities Seminar when it was a panel on women in politics. And I'll tell you, we had a lot of panels that weekend, and that was best, that was the best panel, right, Lindsey?
Sold out.
Sold out, and it was awesome. And you guys did a wonderful, wonderful job, and I got to see you in action, and I really enjoyed that.
The name of it was, "Do We Really Need Men in Politics Also?"
I didn't want to bring that up. I just said, you know. But they did an awesome job. So, on behalf of my city, and I have two certificates for you, but on behalf of the Contract Cities family, we sure are gonna miss you both. And I love you, and I hope to see you guys very soon. And I have to say this one, and just indulge me right here for a moment. One of the count of three, I just want everybody to shout out, "Lieu!" Because that's what we do at Contract Cities. Ready? One, two, three. "Lieu!" Love you, buddy.
Okay, I'm pinch hitting for our neighbors to the north, Hidden Hills and Westlake. So let me read this. Lou Lamont, Laura Rosenthal. In recognition of your dedication, commitment, and community service to your city and this region while serving on the Malibu City Council from 2010 to 2018, council staff and residents, thank you. From the city of Hidden Hills, and it's signed by the council members and Steve Friedland, the mayor. Thank you. Should we pose for a photo? Just kidding. Okay. And this is from the city of Westlake Village to Lou Lamont and Laura Rosenthal. In recognition of your distinguished service as a city council member and a mayor of the city of Malibu, 2010 to 2018, presented by the city council of the city of Westlake Village, December 2018. I'll tell you what, we will get a photo, one in each arm, please.
Got it.
And I do want to thank the city of Westlake Village, who also helped us out with our emergency operations center during this, let me get out of this photo, recent fire. How about a round of applause? Okay, before I go to remarks by the outgoing council members, I just want to say to everybody, you just had a peek, I think, at something that is never seen in the city council, which is the big effect that these two professionals next to me have outside the city walls. It's not enemy territory out there, but it's kind of, you know, for Malibu when it became a city was sort of unknown territory. And I think they've done an excellent job, and as one of the presenters said, they've set a new standard for not only the three of us, but for the two new council members to get outside the castle walls and go make those relationships that are super important for everything that happens, not only in the city of Malibu, but in our region, in our county, and in the state of California. And I, as I said, I've been on the bunny slopes up there, but I'll tell you what, I got an eyeful when I did go to those things, how many people not only know and respect Lieu and Laura, and you can tell the depth of their relationships that they build outside here. And I think it's an indictment on your level of commitment for your $520 a month that you spent so much time away from home building these relationships with not only making a bunch of friends, but tangible, significant legislative accomplishments. And for both of you, I have my deepest respect. And before I get too emotional, I'll turn over the mic to you, Lieu, first for your outgoing comments, followed by Laura.
Thank you. And just thank you for everything that you've done while you've been in office here. You have grown dramatically, tremendously, into the person you always were. And, you know, we're very proud of you, I can tell you that. And I just want to thank all my friends who came out here tonight. All those people up there are really friends of mine, and we work together, we battled together, we've, you know, we've defeated some bad legislation together, and we promoted and got some good legislation together. But beyond that, we have this friendship that will continue eternally. And I am just so truly grateful for all of you to come down here. I know how far Malibu is for all of you. You know, my friend Hannah used to have to take a hotel room because it was so far to come here from. But it was, I truly appreciate it. I won't be very long tonight. I want to thank some people. And first of all, I want to thank my family, who's here, my wife and children, who have been incredibly supportive and endured this long, long journey and have graciously forgiven my absences over the last eight and a half years. So, thank you very much. You'll have me around for a while now. Not such good news for them. I want to thank my fellow council members now and in the past, and several you out there, I see, and just for all your support and friendship and inspiration and all of that. One in particular, I want to thank Laura Rosenthal. Laura and I started talking about city council on those aluminum benches in Bluffs Park probably 15 years ago. And one thing led to another, and we finally wound up doing it, and we wound up doing it together through a series of strange coincidences. But you and I have not always agreed on everything, but we have always supported each other 100% even when we completely disagree, you know? And it's family, you're my sister, and you will always be. I want to thank all my commissioners for all the wonderful work, the admirable work you've done for this city of Malibu. I truly appreciate it, and you have represented me well on all the commissions, and I truly appreciate that. I want to thank our staff, who came together in the best and worst of times recently. Just spectacular job. A special thank you to Mary Linden, who always managed to work it out, whatever it was. So, thank you. We truly appreciate it. We have guests here tonight from Cal Strategies in Sacramento, and I want to thank you both for coming down. And Ted and Claire and Rusty, without them, none of this legislation would have ever happened. And they were the rock that we built this on, and they were just incredibly terrific. Contract Cities and League of California Cities, you have my eternal gratitude. And as far as Contract Cities is concerned, I got this award that allows me to continue to go to all of their meetings all the time, forever. And I'll be doing that. Now, I have had the privilege to work with two excellent city managers. And the first was Jim Thorson, who was absolutely right. We came here, we knew nothing. We didn't even know where the bathroom was. And the bathroom at the old day, in the old city hall, was actually in Jim's office. So, we got to be very close in those days. Jim just taught me everything I knew about being a council member. He was sensational. And we still miss him. But then I got the opportunity to work with Reva Feldman. Reva Feldman is, first of all, I want to thank you for everything you have done, everything. Not only for what you've done, but who you are. She has been the foundation of all the stuff that I have been able to accomplish. She has always been there for me and for all the other council members and for this city. I, as president of Contract Cities, have worked with dozens and dozens and dozens of city managers, and they all agree on one thing. Reva Feldman is one of the best city managers in California, and I think the city of Malibu is lucky to have her. All right, so as I said, my comments are gonna be brief because this evening actually belongs to the new council members who are being called upon to lead this city in very difficult times. I had eight and a half years to write this speech, and a month ago, this wildfire came and rewrote it for me. So I was gonna tell you that my goal was to leave Malibu a better place than when I first got elected, and we almost made it. We, you know, we retired acres and acres of land, we got a bill passed on the rehabs in Sacramento, I got the left turn signal at Big Rock in PCH. And they, all of those things unfortunately pale in comparison to the disaster that just befell us. And my friends and neighbors lost their homes, they lost everything. The city is not the same as it was, and I don't think it ever will be the way it was before. But we have recovered from those disasters. We're gonna recover from this disaster. And I can tell you that, you know, every time something happens like this and we survive it, it seems worse than the last one, and this one certainly was worse than any one that's ever come before. But we're gonna learn from all the mistakes, and we are going to become out stronger as a result of this. Malibu has that ability and that resilience. So I want to thank all the residents of Malibu for the honor and privilege of serving you on your city council. And I do want to have one special thank you for the citizens that stayed behind during the evacuation, the ones that stayed behind and worked hard to fight the fires at, say, the evacuation, the ones that stayed behind and worked hard to fight the fires that saved their neighbors' houses. Not a lot has been said about that from this dais, but I'm going to tell you, I truly appreciate your efforts, and I think that we have to find not only a way to honor you, but also a way to make sure that the next time this happens—and there will be a next time, and this will happen again—that you will have all the support, supplies, and equipment you need, not only that you need, but you deserve. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou. Laura?
Thank you. Hi, it feels strange that this is the last time that I will get to speak from up here to all of you. To begin with, I want to congratulate Karen and Mikey. I think both of you will be wonderful and thoughtful and fabulous council members, and I wish you all the best, and I hope you know that I will be here in any way, shape, or form to help you in any way that I can. I too, this is a very different speech and goodbye than I had envisioned giving a month ago, but our city is a different city than it was a month ago. My heart breaks for the losses and the trauma that we have all gone through, some obviously much more than others. And I hope, and I know, that we will come out stronger, more resilient, and a united and loving community as we move forward with our recovery. We must do that, and I know that we will. And I agree with Lou, and I hope that we can find a way to thank all of the people, the first responders, the people that stayed behind, the city staff, everyone that worked tirelessly to help save what we could of our beautiful city. Gandhi said, "The best way to find yourself"—sorry, for those of you who know me, I'm a weeper, so—"the best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." I had the honor and privilege of serving our city for eight and a half years on the council as mayor and as a councilwoman. And I did find myself in the work of our city and realized that this service truly filled my soul. I hope and I do believe that I did some good along the way. We did do some good stuff. We started an arts commission, we didn't have one. We did a fantastic speaker series. We did a lot of really great environmental work. We redid the truck arrestor bed, and you got your left-hand turn signal at Big Rock, and I got my right-hand turn lane at Morning View. Not mine, but. I had the privilege to work, to meet and to work with a lot of really amazing, hardworking, smart people in our city, in all of the other cities that you have seen represented today and more, our county and our state in our league, which is an amazing—the best league of all the leagues of cities in the United States. And these people give of themselves every single day. No one is perfect, let me repeat that, no one is perfect, least of all me, but I believe in my colleagues, every single person up on this dais, and the people that I have served with before, and our city staff, and I appreciate and know their devotion to Malibu. I know how hard our city staff works, and it's often behind the scenes, and they don't get the recognition that they so often deserve, and I thank you so much. I'm sorry for all the aggravation I've given you, but I'm thankful for the laughs and all the hard work and all the things that we've been able to do together. To Riva, who I have known for many, many years, way before she became city council member, our kids went to school together in Malibu, they grew up together, they even went to the same college together. And so, she loves Malibu as I love Malibu, as we all love Malibu. And thank you for teaching me so much, for making me a better councilwoman, and for helping me lead this city through good and bad. And Jim, I'm not sure where you are out there, I can't find you if you're still here, but I wanted to thank you also for teaching me in the beginning, and Lou is right, we were very green, even though both of us had been on commissions and task forces and the like, it's very different being up here and being a city council member. I want to thank my family, my husband, and my two boys who couldn't be here or hopefully watching on TV, for putting up with me being gone a lot, to meetings, phone calls, travel, and really more for having my brain and my heart pulled away from them and towards the work of our city. To them and to my dear, dear friends, who generously listened to my frustrations and my successes, who encouraged me and supported me, I'm back and I'm ready to play again. To my work husband, who people actually thought that we were husband and wife when we would travel together when we first got elected, thank you for being my supporter, for working with me, and yes, we did not agree. Medical marijuana comes to the top of that list so often, but we always respected each other, and we always worked together, and we always pushed each other, and we're honest with each other in our work and how to be better people and better council members. So, lastly, I want to thank the community of Malibu that allowed me to serve you for these last many years, it has truly been an honor. And I'm going to end with Dr. Seuss, who said, "Don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened." Thank you.
Okay, and on that note, I am adjourning the 14th city council. Thank you very much for your service to the city of Malibu.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to invite the new council members to assume their positions, and I'm going to convene the 15th city council. Yeah, this is not over yet, so might as well take your seats. Yeah, it's not over, team, so don't go anywhere. Karen and Mikey, I'd like to welcome you to the team, and I would like to have a round of applause. Okay, and Laura Rosenthal always told me to be very respectful of the opposite sex, so Karen, I'm going to let you go first with the remarks for the newly elected council members.
Okay, I'll try to make it brief. Thank you very much, everyone who's here and everybody who's watching or listening. Thank you to the council for welcoming us, and I'd like to thank all the staff for the help so far and for the help to come. So, I want to thank the residents, I'd like to thank everybody who voted for me, everybody who supported me, everybody who encouraged me, and I want to make sure that everybody knows, if you didn't vote for me, I want to represent you, I want to advocate for you, especially now. So, I'm here for the whole city, I'm here for the whole community. I do have one brief announcement, I'll call it a public service announcement. The pronunciation of my last name is fairer, as in fair, fairer, fairest, okay? I thought about changing it to farmer, because that's easier to recognize, but I'm not doing that yet. So, I want to say, I am honored, I'm humbled, especially in this very sobering time of great need and devastation. Some of those closest to me in my campaign in particular, I want to recognize, my campaign treasurer, Melanie Goudsward, had her home burned to the ground, and I feel for her, I feel for everyone here who has had that kind of loss or who is displaced, even with a home that did not burn down. I want to help everybody get back as whole as possible, as quickly as possible. I want you to know, I'll be accessible, I will be accountable. We all have a lot of work to do, I take it really seriously. Again, I will advocate for what we need as a city, and I would like to try to do everything I can for each of you to help you get back to where you were. One thing that I consider a moral responsibility for myself and for the city is the process of rebuilding. So, anything that I can do to help streamline that, to help simplify it, to help expedite it, that's my goal, okay? And so with that, I look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mikey?
Thank you, everyone. I'm not known as a long talker, but I might need a few minutes tonight, so I beg for your patience. First of all, I actually signed up to say something to Lou and Laura, so I'll just ad lib it now, but thank you both very much. Lou, so many years of your friendship, and we still have some downloading to do, I want to spend time with you, I want to pick up the mantle on that, I think it's important, I want to learn more about what you know. And in a public forum, I want to say one more time, thank you again for helping save my dad's life, I will never forget that, that was huge. Laura, yeah, I probably have to tease you somewhere in here, but because of you conspiring with my wife, with Maggie, somehow I ended up in local politics. I think she wanted me out of the house more and started with Public Works and then on the Planning Commission. We have been through so much, we have done so much. And one of the remarkable things of it, whether we agreed or not, and we didn't always agree, but we always had that discourse, we always had the conversation, and that's the hallmark of democracy to me. And our ability to do that is paramount, and I appreciate the time you spent, your mentoring, your insights, your intelligence, your caring, your passion, both sides of your passion, and thank you, it means everything to me. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank my family for putting up with me and all that I've done and I'm going to do here. I've already spent seven years with the city, and now I'm signing up for goodness knows a bit longer. I want to tell you something about me. I like to work with input, I like to work with your input. I don't know what each of you know unless you tell me. So, I welcome your input at all times, and I need it. If this is going to be a government of the people, then I need all the people to be a part of it. So, those of you that communicate with me on a regular basis already and are part of sort of my personal team, thank you. For everyone else here, my phone number, like I've said before, has been listed on the city website for seven years already, it still is. My new email address will be listed there too, I don't know how to actually get it yet, but I would love people to get ahold of me, and I'd love to know what you know. If you want to complain, I'm good with that, but if you have ideas and solutions, I have all day for that. So, by saying this already, sometimes I get overwhelmed with messages, so I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Text, probably the quickest, phone calls take a little while, emails, I'll get to, but really, I really do want to know what you know, I really care. There's a great example, Pat Healy, standing in the back, someone who's always let me know what she thinks. I envision tonight as a night of some celebration, but really, all I feel right now is I want to help us get through the trauma we've experienced. Make no mistake, I feel that this city, our city, is in trauma. For myself, I keep replaying the moments of that Friday in my head and wondering what more I could have done, and the personal tragedy experienced by so many is constantly on my mind. I have a fairly large list of things I'd like to accomplish while I'm on our city council, but the Woolsey Fire has put much of that on hold, at least temporarily, and I want to take a little time to share some of my thoughts on the largest disaster in the history of Malibu. First of all, as has been said, this fire will come again, and it'll be just as hot, fast, and large as this one, and there'll be other fires burning at the same time, and no one is going to come save your home. These fires are too big, and there's too many of them, to expect the fire department will save us, and no one is willing to pay the taxes to have a huge amount of firefighters waiting around for our 10- to 20-year firestorm. I think the mindset we all need to have is that we do have to take care of ourselves. I mean, hopefully, those people are here to protect us, absolutely, but I don't think that mindset can take us forward successfully. We live in a high-fire area, this is an extremely dangerous area, and it's no surprise to me that this has happened, and no surprise to anyone who's old Malibu that this has happened. I just hear anyone who's been here for decades that's surprised. Part of my answer is, we need to build homes that can defend themselves more than our homes do now, and it's not just how we build the homes, but the landscaping and the location as well. The most vulnerable home in my neighborhood rode out the fire by itself, and it's fine. I was too scared to go up there and try and protect it, it was in a scary spot. Concrete, metal roof, even the planters are concrete, landscaping, yes, even some of it burned, it was—it just didn't get hot, it was well done, and this house is in a terrible location. I'm really glad to hear some people already talking about building homes that are more fire-resistant, and many of them are custom modular, steel frame, environmentally superior to our current homes, they look amazing, they can be built quicker, and are generally cheaper than traditional homes, and they're totally custom, beautiful homes. This doesn't mean your home can't burn down, but it sure helps. And lastly, on this subject, we're all thinking we're safe, but I worry, I truly worry about eastern Malibu and our friends in Topanga and the Palisades. I don't think conditions have changed for the future. The second thing on my list is communication. I think we all know we need to improve communication. One thing I keep thinking about during the fire is Nixal, and partially our city's text messages. There was one place I could get one bar in Point Dume, but a lot of them had web links to download the information. That's just an example of something that absolutely did not work. And I know from talking to some people that we can't really make our cell phone system work in a fire, they're all on fire poles and our telephone poles, and they have, what, over a thousand of them burned down. So, I know we have a lot of work to do on communication on multiple levels. I have more detail here, but I'm going to move on. And you know what, this whole event's made me wonder what a couple people have said, should we go back to those old-fashioned, like in Hawaii, the sirens? I mean, I'm just trying to think, I know there was confusion even with the reverse 911, even with all the messaging we got, I'm wondering— got. I'm wondering, I mean, if you heard that siren going, I know, I, I know what's going Third, water. We need water to fight fires. I'm no engineer, I'm no genius, but it just seems that fire safe generators are a no-brainer. I'd love to, I don't understand why we don't look at that closely. I think we will. Fourth, those of us that stayed and fought the fires. We have a problem here. I know that collectively we saved hundreds of homes. I understand that. But many of us felt like treated like criminals and that, that's a problem. So, by that going down, I know hundreds of people say they're going to stay no matter what and that scares me because that's not how you act in a fire. You really have to know what you're doing. You have to have equipment, you have to know how to use it, you have to have some idea about how a fire works. And so I, I really worry about that. I worry about both ends of that. I know that in my neighborhood, if the winds had been another 10 or 15 miles an hour, we'd have had to abandon ship and gotten out of there. And with that said, there was people that tried to stay and left because it was too much. It was overwhelming. So, it takes the right mindset. So, I worry about that and I think there's compromises we can, we can come up with certainly involve in, including local fire brigades, training, and obviously better communication with the fire command. And I call them fire command because I don't know what else to call them. I know there was frustration too, I want to acknowledge, on the brave firefighters that were in the city. I thanked them for coming, but their standing orders were, were very hard for those of us that were there to understand. And I think it was frustrating for the firefighters too. The first firefighter that came into our neighborhood came in four hours later. He'd driven directly from San Diego. He had no idea where he was. And I happened to be down there. My son, Emmett, and I, we were fighting the fires and like, "Great, we need your help." He's like, "I can't go up there. It's a box canyon. My, I don't have orders." I said, "I respect that, but please figure out how to come up there and when you do, we're going to be up there trying to save houses." And he did. He crept up, it took a while, and just in time, just in time, to save my friend Mike Matthews' house. Mike and Jilly. I mean, just in time. Well done, Emmett. The blockade, obviously frustrating for every single person here. That has to be, obviously, that didn't work. And once again, that helped create a culture where nobody wants to leave in a disaster. And that's a problem too. So, we have a lot of work to do there. Work I'm committed to working on. And seventh and the obvious one is the evacuation plan. It just, it, it didn't work. My last phone call before we lost power with my wife, she was caught on Point Doom, terrified, and I just told her, "Turn around and go to Zuma." And now our evacuation spot is, for a fire at least, is Zuma, not to go down the highway because it didn't work until we figured that out. I'm in favor at this point of appointing some sort of either independent commission or a task force or someone, a group of people that can figure out, I'm not as interested in what went wrong, I already know that, on what we can do better. And I think we need some experts. And some of these things are probably simpler to solve than others. So, I'm in favor of that if the rest of the council is, and I hope we can bring something forward on that. Huge amount of appreciation for everyone that stayed and saved homes. And then beyond that, for everyone that did their part and is still doing their part. So many people joining together to help each other, to supply each other, to get clothing and other needed things to people, to get people into temporary housing. Phenomenal part of an emergency is to see people pull together and that, I think that's special. I really do. I think that's the core of Malibu. I think that's the Malibu I grew up in and the Malibu I know. There's a lot more. It's going to, this is going to take a while and, um, I think that's enough for me for now, but I urge you all to join together to be a part of us rebuilding Malibu. Help whoever you're able to help. Be kind, be generous, and let's rebuild a city and a community that we can be proud of. Thank you very much.
At this point, I'd like to have a couple of presentations to the outgoing Mayor Rick Mullen and a couple of the awards here that arrived and to give them to you if you see fit. First we, first up, we have the Wave Award. Want to go down and take a picture? Uh, you know, you can just give it to me. I'll get a picture later. Very much. Well, she's going to take your photo. Can you hold it up? And another photo here of Rick in action. I don't know where that came from, but thank, that was from Reva. Now, we have some remarks from outgoing Mayor Rick Mullen.
Thank you very much, Jefferson. I appreciate, um, the fine gifts. And, um, I, first of all, want to thank my family who, uh, supported me and put up with all of the time away from home because, uh, it's just like military service, I say, is always borne by the family members who have to bear the burden of the, uh, service members not there. And the same thing is true for people who serve on, uh, the council and my family's been very supportive and I want to thank them very much for supporting my decision to serve the community and for, uh, be willing to bear the burden of me not being around as much as I should be. Also want to thank my, um, outgoing council members, Lou and Laura, who are very good about mentoring me and showing me the world outside of the city of Malibu. Um, I want to thank my buddies here, the Peak Mullin Wagner, uh, three hombres or three, three amigos. It's been great and it will continue to be great. And I want to welcome my new council members. I look forward to working with you. And I want to thank the staff of the city of Malibu. It's been an honor to serve with all of you. You know, we get up here and take up all the airtime, but you are the people who actually do the work behind the scenes and I sincerely appreciate all the professionalism that you have given to the city of Malibu all these many years. And I'd like to thank city manager and, uh, the city attorney who have been very good about, um, communicating with me at every turn. You have to have a good working relationship with the city manager and she's been nothing but professional. And I can assure you, there are plenty, as Lou would attest, there's plenty of other cities that will snatch her up if we, um, ever let her go. And Christie, thank you very much for all the guidance and, uh, mentoring along the way. I think you've got the, um, the greatest depth of experience here in the city of Malibu and I really appreciate all the help that you have given. As far as any accomplishments that happened since I came on the council two years ago, those were all collective efforts and I'm not going to take any credit for any of that. There are things that we accomplished, there are things that we're still working on. And as far as the, the latest event, the fire goes, as I said in the last council meeting, uh, the buck stops here. I take full responsibility for everything. I was in the leadership position of the city and I'm dedicated to, um, figuring out all of the things that we can improve upon as we go forward. And just because I'm turning over the mayorship to, uh, Jefferson doesn't mean that I abdicate the things that went right or wrong or could be improved upon during that, uh, very, um, difficult time for the city and what will be a difficult time for many months and probably years to come for many of the people who have suffered. Skylar and I met this morning with a couple of very enthusiastic and ardent, um, architectural professionals from our community and we were brainstorming about ways that we can make the, uh, process of getting people to, um, whole again, who lost their homes, be as, as quick and expeditious and, uh, painless. Of course, it's going to be painful, but we want to reduce the level of pain and the time that's involved in that. And I know that all, everyone on the council, and I'm sure the new council members are dedicated to seeking things that will make, uh, everything better for those who have lost everything. And I, I'm, I'm personally dedicated to that. I know that the city staff is and all of the council members, new and old. And that concludes my comments. Thank you very much.
All right. With that, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the new mayor. Do I have any nominations for the new mayor?
I would like to nominate Jefferson Zuma J. Wagner to become the mayor.
If I have a second?
I will gladly second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because Robert's Rules of Order says it doesn't read a second. I should have read that. Okay, great. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Rick, and thank to, to the community. At this point, I'd like to bring forward the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. And the floor is now open for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Karen Farrer.
I will second, second that nomination for Karen Farrer.
And hearing now that there are no other names for nomination for Mayor Pro Tem, that is closed. And the Mayor Pro Tem, by acclamation, we all say, aye. If there is no opposition, that is it. Mayor Pro Tem. Up to administration and oath of office, newly elected mayor, myself, and Mayor Pro Tem and council members. So, that will take place down there at the podium. And then we'll have our remarks by me afterwards. Who would like to go first for the swearing in? So, Mike Pearson will go first and then Karen Farrer and then myself. And Emmett, you've done a fine job. Now you get to swear him in. Thank you.
Is it on? All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Mike Pearson.
Aye, Mike Pearson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As council member of the city of Malibu.
As council member of the city of Malibu.
And that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That it will bear true faith and allegiance.
And it will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About, upon which I am about to enter.
There you go. Welcome, Mike. Welcome to the city council, Mike.
Thank you.
And Karen will be sworn in by her husband.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Karen Farrer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Malibu.
As Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Welcome to the 15th Malibu City Council, Karen.
And, uh, I will step up to the podium for my oath and Rob Reiner, if you, if it's too long for you, Carrie can help.
Thank you. First, before we swear you in, uh, I just want to say that Malibu has gone through a tough time and, uh, there's nobody more fitting to be taking over as mayor right now than, uh, Jeff Zuma J., uh, Wagner. He is the epitome of Malibu. He stands for everything that is good about Malibu. He's the, he's like a moral compass for us. And if anybody ever wants to read our, uh, mission statement here, this man is the embodiment of the mission statement of Malibu. So, we're very lucky to have him right now. And I want to welcome the new, uh, the new members. Mikey, uh, you say you don't speak very long, but you know, maybe if that's short for you, I, we were in big trouble. No, that was great. It was a great speech you made.
I got over it.
Yeah, okay. It was great. Anyway, congratulations. All right, where's the, uh, the thing? There we go.
I need an oath.
Yeah, we need an oath.
Oh, look at the size of that print.
I know. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jefferson Wagner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve.
That I will diligently serve.
As mayor of the city of Malibu.
As mayor of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
To the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have remarks by the newly elected mayor. I'm going to make it brief. I promise you that. My biggest concern for the next year will be repatrironizing you people with your homes that were lost. I think in the first process is the cleanup, the details of that, which I will bring forward in the next council meeting. And that is the process for getting your properties cleaned up legitimately, getting the hazardous materials off. the hazardous materials off those properties, getting your tiny homes, getting your Conexes, getting your trailers back onto the property if that's what you desire. That's my goal in the next year. That will be the main thing that I'll be working on is getting those 400 to 500 homes getting started, getting processed. I see so many faces in here of people that lost homes. And this is the rebuilding. It's not going to be pleasant. I don't want you to feel that you're going to be bullied at City Hall for any reason. I will be working with you. This council is firm about working with you to get your homes replaced. That will be the premier object of my next year. Aside from that, I'm going to pursue the Ombudspur's office to help us in the future. Thank you very much. Though briefly, we have communications from the public, and that's where we start. So we're over with the ceremonial stuff. Now we're back to business. So that's 2A, people that signed up for 2A. First up is, last name looks like Ross. Bert Ross. Okay, Bert Ross, everybody knows Bert. Bert, you're up. Thank you. Followed by, I can hardly even read this.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bert Ross, and I lived on Canaan Doom Road, BTF, before the fire. And I hope that someday I will stand before you and say I once again live on Canaan Doom Road. Karen and Mikey, congratulations on your well-earned election. You have already served our community with distinction, and I am confident that our city is in good hands as we begin the lengthy process of rebuilding. We are fortunate to have both of you on the council, and if there is any way I can help you in your efforts, I will be there for you. Laura and Lou, you have served on the city council the entire seven years that Joan and I have lived in Malibu. You have given our city everything you have, and we are most grateful to you. I especially want to thank you for your friendship. Each of you took me out to lunch independently within a couple of months of my moving here. You made a complete stranger feel welcome, and I will never forget it. Good luck to the two of you. You're special. And I just want to say something because I think something remarkable happened tonight, and I don't think anybody noticed it. For the first time in history, and I'm referring to Laura's talk, both Mahatma Gandhi and Dr. Seuss were quoted in the same talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. I also would like to remind everybody in the room right now that after this, we have about six, seven more speakers. We have a reception in the room next door, and you're all welcome to join us there. Thank you. Up next, it looks like, and it was hard to read, last name. Followed by Ted Vale, whatever name that is. Now that three council members can't figure it out.
Is it Chris Frost?
It's Chris Frost. Is he here? Okay, go on. Ted Vale, you're up, followed by Bobby Milstein. Ted Vale.
I wanted to congratulate Lou and Laura for their service on the council. I noted that Lou was the only representative of Big Rock. We have nobody from eastern Malibu on the council. I hope you will not forget us. We're going to make sure you don't forget us, particularly when we have the next fire that comes by Big Rock. We're going to be very proactive about building our own fire department or whatever it is there. We are not going to rely on official sources, as you said, Mikey. And I think the other areas of eastern Malibu are going to do the same. There's going to be another fire. It's not going to hit in western Malibu. You're already done. You're burned. We were burned in '93. We're going to be active again. And Karen and Mikey, congratulations on your going on the council. I think you're both going to be worthwhile members of the council, and we look forward to working with you. And Rick, you, as a fire chief, fire captain, you can lead us through the next fire, hopefully, and prevent us and guide us in some of the things we do and shouldn't do in the next few times. And Skylar, you are now the senior member of the council, and we're your wisdom, even we're your youth and your wisdom, but you need to also lead us. And Zuma-J, I work with you on the Adamson House Foundation, and I appreciate your leadership there, and I know I'm going to appreciate your leadership on the council. You are Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Bobby Milstein is up, followed by Bruce Silverstein, followed by John Maza.
I'd like to thank you guys for your service. Welcome the new council members. So some of you know me, some of you know I'm involved in the fire business, in Wild and Defense. What we just had was a natural disaster. Everyone's really upset, looking for answers how it was handled. It was handled basically the best we can handle a natural disaster. LA County Fire is an amazing agency, but there is never, ever, ever going to be a time in our lives that any agency can deal with something of the magnitude that we just had. We have many amazing people in Malibu. I'm super proud of everyone that stayed or fought the fire. If the people that stayed didn't stay, we would have had hundreds of more homes that have burnt. Separate from my fire business, something I want to do for a while, we just formed a 501(c)(3). It's called the First Defender Foundation. The goal of the first, here, I'll read the mission statement right now. The First Defender Foundation's primary mission is to bring national wildfire coordinating group training to the many residents who have traditionally defended their homes from the devastating fires in the Santa Monica Mountain Range and throughout California. The First Defender Foundation mission is not intended to convert civilians into firefighters. Rather, we will educate and prepare those who stay to defend their homes, to do it with the latest methods and equipment that can save theirs and their neighbors' lives and homes. People have to really make an informed decision if they're going to stay. You know, I know a lot of people stayed and defended houses. It is a scary proposal. If you are not mentally and physically prepared to do it, you have a good shot of killing you and your loved ones. I've never been at a fire like this fire. I was at Calamigos Ranch throughout the event. I have never seen it get blacker in all the wildfires I've been through in my entire life. The foundation we're starting, it's a 501(c)(3). It is non-political. Politics must stay at the door. We're welcoming any resident of Malibu, anyone in law enforcement, any city employees to join us. And we're not training you to be firefighters. We're going to run a program based on a wildfire program that someone, you know, would get red-carded and join forestry. We're not training you how to cut lines in the mountains. We're not interested in that. We're not interested in being firefighters. We are the first defenders, and we welcome you as a city to get involved with us and harness us because there's warriors in this town. Since the days of the Ringes, people have fought for this town, and they will fight for this town until the day they die. And we all have a right to defend our properties. We don't need anyone's permission to do it. We are going to do it, and we invite you to join us on this journey and see where we could fit in. There's lots of things to talk about in the future. Right now, that's all I really want to say. And thank you all for your service, and we look forward to working with everyone here and making this a safer place to live.
Thank you, Bobby. Bruce, you're up, and followed by John, and after John is Sushil Kumar.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bruce Silverstein. I'm a member of the community. My comments will be fairly general. I understand that tonight's meeting has been relatively ceremonial, congratulatory, and organizational. And typically, this meeting is a cause for ceremony, congratulations, and celebration, but that's not the case tonight. Despite the celebratory tone of this meeting, most members of this community are not feeling very celebratory this evening. Indeed, that would be an extreme understatement. Many members of the community remain without a home in which to live while they struggle to find a way to rebuild their homes. Some members of the community are literally homeless, living in their cars. And I'm not talking about the many community members who have been homeless before the fire. I'm talking about people who are living in beautiful homes and were productive members of this community just a month ago. Many of these members of the community were renting guest homes, rooms and homes. They've lost everything they own. They don't even have renters insurance. A large number of community members are anxious to begin the rebuilding process, but they've not even been able to begin the debris clearance process. Some people have not yet been able to gain access to their property. It's critical and crucial that the city take whatever emergency action is necessary to permit our community members to bring the recovery and rebuilding process without further delay. I read today on social media, and I don't know if this is true, that permit fees have not yet been established for the debris removal and demolition process, much less for the rebuilding process. Perhaps that's untrue. If it is true, however, it's difficult to understand how that could be the case. Whether or not it's true, I want to encourage the city as strongly as I can to cause the fees to be waived for permits required by community members whose homes were destroyed or damaged in the fire. Also, I want to urge the city to employ a skilled expediter or other permitting expert to assist the members of our community, free of charge, to obtain the permits needed to remove debris, demolition irreparably damaged property, and rebuild their homes. Although every property is unique in some manner, it's undoubtable that many issues will be in common to most permit applications. And there's no reason why every member of the community should have to do this on their own, when it could be done uniformly for everybody. There are many other things that the city can be doing to facilitate the rebuilding of our community. They must be done with all alacrity. I'm looking forward to seeing this new council soberly and seriously move forward on an emergency basis to address the crisis that our city continues to experience. I sincerely hope the newly constituted city council, the new mayor, the city manager, and city attorney, and the entire staff will move heaven and earth to get the members of our community the relief, recovery, and rebuilding assistance they require in the most efficient, economical, and expeditious manner possible. There's no reason that meetings need to be once a week. This council can meet every day if necessary until that process is firmly underway. Thank you.
Good timing, Bruce. Thank you. John Maza, followed by Sushil, followed by Scott Dietrich.
First, I want to second everything the prior speaker said. I also appreciate Karen and Mikey's comments. I know they're going to be dedicated to working on this project. We heard a lot tonight about outside of the city, but right now, it's inside of the city that counts. And we need, several things need to be done immediately because, as he said, people are literally living in their cars. We've lost a great deal of residents to other cities and students. So when they open up the school, it'll be quite a shock to see who isn't there. And we need to bring back the people of Malibu. And unfortunately, a lot of them are old-time locals, and they are the heart of this city. Their houses burned down because they were built in the '50s, mostly. A lot of the major mansions made it because, number one, they were major mansions, and number ten, they had their own fire departments, et cetera. So I really want to request that you hold a special meeting, and you hold it as fast as you can. It will do two things. First, it will change the permitting structure for mobile homes. At present, you need a building permit. It's in our codes, and we need to change it, and we can do it very quickly. And that's a building permit for a house, not a mobile home. Now, the second is, short-term rentals need to be suspended for at least three years, and it needs to be done today. I talked to many people looking for houses, and they run into the fact that there are none, there are no guest houses. And I've heard real estate agents go, "Well, I could get $40,000 a month for this house on a short-term rental, so I'll knock it down 30% and I'll rent it out to somebody who got burned out." Well, that's not the way it should work. We need to free up approximately 600 rental spaces in Malibu, and we need to do it tomorrow morning because there literally are people sleeping in their cars. There literally are. And the longer they wait, and the people that are out of town, the longer they wait, the less chance they have of coming back. It's just the fact. And we have a city council resolution number 13 that says you will always favor the citizens over private interests. It says always. And you need to read that when you go home, and you need to act on it because once you've lost a citizen to some other place because they've been there for nine months and they can't get back here, you've lost them. And we need to bring back the spirit of Malibu and the people of Malibu. 20%, 25% of the people aren't here, and we need to bring them back, or we won't have the same thing. We also need to deal with mansionization. Now, we can come back with a short-term rental immediately. Christie was assigned to come up with a way we can ban it, and we need to do that next week. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Well done. Sushil Kumar from the SBA. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, elected officials, affected residents. My name is Sushil. I'm with the Small Business Administration. You've heard a lot about rebuilding tonight. Our focus at the Small Business Administration is to help toward that cause. The first line of defense after every natural disaster is insurance. In the absence of it, it's FEMA and the SBA. FEMA is a grant-based program. The SBA is the low-interest rate disaster program. $2 million for businesses of all sizes. I heard a lot about rentals. Business owners could borrow money for rebuilding. Private nonprofits, FEMA actually has a requirement that private nonprofits go through the litmus test with the SBA before they can get grant money from the state. Homeowners up to $200,000 for damages to their property and $40,000 for personal property in terms of cars and also renters. So our program serves the needs of the many. Unofficial numbers that I've heard so far is about 500 homes in Malibu, if not more. Plenty of businesses were not burnt down, but they suffered economic injury. Here's a startling statistic. One in five business owners, if they're closed for the first five days, have a 90% rate of failure within the first year. Our disaster recovery center is open, taking applications, and that deadline is at August 20th, but the physical injury deadline is 11th of January. We're encouraging all of our business owners, whether they've been affected through actual burn damages or through not being able to sell. So this could be distribution. Roads were closed, we couldn't sell. My employees didn't show up, I need to make payroll. I need to pay a vendor. The only requirement is that they don't put the money in their pockets, shareholder appropriations. So business owners, Malibu, home-based businesses, we're here to help you. I think time is 58 seconds left. So basically, each one of you has a flyer in front of you that we would love for you to showcase. If you don't have it, we can make sure you have it before I leave. And it's a one-page flyer. We'd love for you to keep it at City Hall so that business owners can come and say, "Where do I go for assistance?" FEMA does not have a business program, and we're considered the lender of last resort. So I encourage each Malibu resident that's been affected to come talk to us so we can address the rebuilding needs of the community. Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have a question? So you are at the Disaster Assistance Center, both of them, correct?
I do, sir. Yes, we are.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
My job as a public information officer is to go around, create awareness. We were in Ventura County a couple of days ago. A couple of my colleagues went to Anchorage, Alaska, so I'm filling in for them. But my job is to make sure I answer questions and fill in the details.
Very good. Thank you very much for coming down here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you. Scott Dietrich, followed by Doug Burge, who has other pledges of extra minutes.
Thank you and congratulations, Mayor Wagner, and our new council members. John and I have a slightly different viewpoint normally on the short-term rentals, but I agree with him now. I've got a guest house that we use for an Airbnb, and we've now put it back to a long term and have someone in there whose house burned up in Yorba Buena because there is such a lack. And the one thing that we should all be able to agree, at least on those standing houses where the owner wasn't there, that should immediately be banned. We should have banned it before and put those back to long-term rentals for people in our community. But what I really wanted to do was just thank Lou and Laura. A lot was spoken of how much they did outside the city, and you would think that they didn't have any time left for the residents, but that was clearly not the case. They were always there to answer email or calls because I'm in eastern Malibu, and Lou and I talked frequently, and he was always there, always returned phone calls, and I thanked him for that.
Thank you, Scott. Doug Burge. Doug, if Robin is here and... There we are. Other folks, are you here? Can you just raise your hand real quick to? All right, well, we'll give you the time you need, Doug. Four minutes, five minutes, what you need.
Yeah, this is fine.
Thank you.
I really like the fact that when you stand over here, you can speak to everybody. Is there a way that I can speak from there, or is that not something?
Those mics have already been put away.
All right. I'm only, only bringing this up because everyone behind us, we're all the citizens here. And I'm Doug Burge. I'm one of the architects. I've met with Rick and met with Skylar this morning. And those of you that know me, I am not somebody to sit around and wait for something to do. We go into action. There's so many citizens around here that lead their lives that way. And I say as citizens, what we need to do is what exactly that I did the moment the fire broke out because they're going to figure out they're going to need me. Now, I'm speaking here tonight, not just as an architect, but as a citizen. Somebody's been here for 30 years, raised my kids here, and all these people, both behind me, watching and in front of me, have been friends and family, and we're all in this together. We put into action immediately, talking to a number of architects. We talked to the builders. This was literally hours after the fire. I got in here, I was with Skylar the night that his sister was married to Montecito, a very, very amazing moment for your family and all of us watching there, but knowing that the town was burning behind us. We came in, we figured out a way to get in, and you just got to do it, and you figure out a way, and we got in. And we helped those in need. But in the meantime, while we were in, I was relentlessly figuring out ways to help this city formulate the plan. And we have a plan. And we've gotten together with architects, builders, expeditors from not just this city, but other cities that are not even this area, but they may be working here in Malibu. We've contacted and did research on all the other past cities that have gone through a similar scenario. We've talked to people from Montecito to Santa Barbara, to people up in Santa Rosa, all the way to San Diego. We have their facts. We have our, how they're did it. It was one year ago this month that Ventura took down about 534 homes. Right now, they only have about 125 applications for permits. That's less, almost less than a quarter. That's a year later. We can do better than that. What we have is a plan that we've developed. Lester, Tobias, and I, we've been doing this for 25, 30 years in this town, and it's something that we have, we think are great ideas, using our current plan. We don't need to make new plans. We have codes that we all are very good at reading between the lines of our codes. And we already have read between those lines because those of us that have been in the trenches here have been figuring out how to ways to get permits for all these years. We need to have a consistency. Barriers are dropped. The planning commission needs to work with us and work with the citizens. No more issues. There's one issue, and it was stated by all five of you tonight. It's rebuild this town in the best possible way. We have a plan, we're calling it a map plan, Malibu Action Plan. Everyone loves a map. If we're going to Cleveland, we know where we're going, we can kind of figure it out along the way. We have a plan in place that we would like to present to whoever wants to listen. And all I know is that right now, we can only suggest. As citizens, we can meet, we can rally, we can get together, but we can't act. We want to act, and we want to be involved. The staff that you have is amazing. We all know that. But the tools that they have in their toolbox are not, they're out of date, they need to be fixed, they're rusty, and they probably have burned. So we're just asking that you ask us, that not just the rebuild, architects, builders, and other professionals, expeditors, all of us have so much experience that we're ready to present a plan literally tomorrow. And we talked about that this morning. This will not take overnight. We know that. These other cities, you can't work that fast because it has to be a good plan. And this is the kind of thing that we've mentioned, and we've talked to, you know, Mikey and Karen and Rick and Riva, and she even knows that I probably don't need to be texting her at 6:00 a.m. on a Sunday. But the point is, is that we are, need to be empowered to take our plan. And our plan is figured, we're going to be representing a bipartisan group that we're ready to go tomorrow. Now, whether you need to have to assign a drug czar, I mean, excuse me, a rebuild czar or a committee or something, you know, when 9/11 happened, TSA happened, and they formed it quickly. So we're just asking you to do that. I'm very passionate about what I do, those that know me. And this takes passion because there's a lot of people hurting. The fire may have been out a month ago, but it's very much burning inside this room and everyone that's watching. And I know that, and so many others know that. And I know you know that, too. So get us off the kids table, put us at the adults table so we can join this planning staff in presenting ideas and plans that I think are wonderful, and we can go in this together and look like. Because to me, wouldn't it be amazing? We talk about the future and your tenure here. And to me, coming five, four years, whatever it's going to take from now, Malibu may be known as the town where we think there's a bunch of rich people, and we go to the Soho House and we have cocktails. Now, that may be a few people, but everyone in this town is people that's lived here. I don't want to have those people that have lived 40, 50 years to lose their properties. Why would we? We don't want this to become Monaco. We want this to be Malibu because we can do it, we have to do it together. And I'm only going to leave you one quick thing. We are presenting hope. I was at a job when I first am interviewing, and no one teaches us how to grieve council if someone's lost their home. They're going into a dark place, they're looking at what just burned, and she turned to me, never met her before during that day, and she says, "Give me some hope." I thought for two seconds, I go, "Okay, go home, get a picture on Pinterest, print it, frame it, put it by your bedside. You're going to look at it every day and say, 'I will get home one day.'" And that's when I want to give the hope to everybody tonight, starting, because you guys can do it, and we're all behind you, but just let us in and let us present our plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Norm Haney, Norm Haney's up, followed by Craig Hill.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Congratulations to both Karen and Mikey for their success in the election. I liked everything that you two said about how you view your position on the city council and the things that you hope to do while you're there. I also want to thank Lou and Laura for all of the hard work they did for eight years. My guess is they spent well over 40 hours a week working on city business, and they did a hell of a great job. They put, they put the people together necessary to make a change, and I want to thank you very, very much. They did a great, great job, and we'll see the results of that as time goes on. With regard to the rebuild, I like what I just heard Doug say. So Doug, write it down. Step one, step two, step three. Don't wait for people to ask for it to be presented. Present it. Come to the podium, present it to everyone, have it handed out, and I'm sure the city council will take the good parts, which are probably 98%, and for the 2%, they may have better ideas. But don't wait. There's two things I'd like to talk about real quick. One is, we shouldn't be building it the same as we did before. There are ways to build houses that make it very difficult for them to burn down. I think the new houses will have to be sprinkled. There are ways to sprinkler around the eaves. There's ways to have generators and pump systems. We need to look at all those things because we don't want to build them back exactly the same way they were. We want them to be fire resistant this time. One of the looming problems that we have right now is the Los Angeles County Fire Department policy. They seem to be very reluctant to change the fire flow and the amount of pressure and the access drive. Now, many of these standards have been increased since the 50s, 60s, 70s, and even 80s, and many of the homes that burned can't meet those current standards. You may have a situation where there are 20 homes on the same street with the same water main, and one of those houses burned down. How can you go to that person and say, "Well, you know, you can't meet, you can't meet the fire pressure standard, so you can't build at all." Not only have you stripped him from his right to use his property, but you've also made his property worthless. No one's going to buy it if the fire department is not going to be flexible on their policy. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Thank you, Norm. Craig Hill, and you have extra minutes. Is Cliff here still? There's Cliff, Hashi, and Jay. Okay, six minutes, Craig.
Hopefully, I won't use it all. We'll see. Thank you, guys, for everything you've said. Your remarks are really inspiring. Norm, I mean, Lou and Laura, thank you for your efforts here. I wanted to bring, well, before I get into it, I just want to echo some comments. Doug's comments on the rebuilds, those sounded really good. And Norm on materials, that sounds really good. And John and Scott on the short term rentals, I echo that completely. I want to report a violation of a council resolution that was made in 2015, and I wanted to get that in tonight because I, we need some institutional memory, and we have two of the council members here who were involved in that resolution, as were several of you. So hopefully, you can agendize this to a later date. It's not your main priority, but it's important to, to have this addressed. And that's regards to the Brightman application to develop 30 acres between Big Rock and Los Flores. That area is now the largest remaining mature Esha wilderness not burned in the fire in the city of Malibu, as, as combined with the Mountains Conservancy property upslope from it. So it's very precious as habitat. We've already seen more mountain lions in there, and in fact, I'm going to be working with Cal Wildlife this week to identify spots for cameras there. In 2015, Lou Lamont said of the Brightman project, "This is the biggest project the city has ever seen. It's astounding. This is twice the size of the Crummer project. I remember when this whole thing began. PCH was the access." Some history. This started, the application started in 2004. The EIR was finally ordered in 2009, almost 10 years ago, yet there's still no draft for public input on this thing. And new evidence suggests that the applicant may be piecemealing a housing tract to get around the strict requirements of the Subdivision Map Act. Several times, the council's come within a hair's breadth of denying the application because it's, many things have been unaddressed, and it's incomplete, but they've always given him another chance, and another chance, and another chance. In 2015, the council considered a resolution to increase the funding for the EIR. And they all wanted to ensure that certain things be included in the EIR that hadn't been, including an assessment of which of the three or four potential routes would be the best access to the site, legally, environmentally, in terms of safety, traffic, et cetera. Now, the resolution was nominally just to add money to, to the EIR, but Lou Lamont articulated the resolution, saying, quote, "I'd like to make a motion that's contingent on the fact that the resolution expands beyond the staff report for the money to include the kinds of things that we want in this." And the kinds of things, you saw in my letter, they talked about the access route. That was a unanimous vote. That was the resolution. We don't proceed until the EIR identifies what is the access route. And that was confirmed at the 2016 scoping meeting for the EIR by the consultant. But a few months later, the applicant threatened each and every homeowner to either concede access to Seaboard or he'd sue for easement. And we thought, okay, well, we're waiting for the EIR, so go ahead and sue us if you want, but that's not really relevant yet. But we did hire a title insurance company and an attorney and confirmed we are correct that he does not have easement over our road. So skip ahead to a couple of months ago. We discovered spray paint, basically graffiti, all over our road, hundreds of markings in six different colors on our half mile road, done by the applicant because he's already starting a project to widen our road to 20 feet. Without any, any permit from the city, without having gone through the EIR process, we don't even have the draft yet. And staff tells me he's about to put drilling rigs on our road. That would block traffic. So how does he think he can get away with this? Well, we hear that he showed something to Christie Hogan, some kind of easement documentation, and that she decided he had easement. But if that's true, then, okay. Okay, good, good.
We'll, we'll pick up the dialogue.
We'll get to that.
Yes.
But there, there is no language recorded against my deed that says he would have easement. So in any case, this would be a matter for a judge to decide. It's a civil thing, so there's no way he can be proceeding in the way he is now. And I noticed a line item in the city budget, $920 Craig Hill easement issue, which, that sounds like a title report. So somebody at the city paid money to decide that he could go ahead and use our road. And just today, Bonnie Blue confirmed that the city still assumes that he has Seaboard access. So in effect, the city has violated its own resolution to have the EIR look at what the access is supposed to be. And so potential remedies, this needs to be agendized, right? You need to talk about either just expiring the application as, or denying it outright as it's almost happened a couple of times, or maybe you let it go ahead with a proviso that Seaboard is not the access. I've listed a number of things we'd like you to do now that are on the last page of my letter. I'd like you to look at that, and maybe we can talk about over the, those over the coming next few days. And to wrap up, last week, he sent a fear mongering letter regarding fire hazards to the neighborhood, saying he needed to widen the road to 20 feet for our benefit. But ironically, the best benefit would be for him to cut the access to PCH as the school district was going to do back in the past, and then we'd have a second egress for emergencies, and Big Rock, the whole, Big Rock would be much safer having that extra access route. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Craig. We have one other speaker. We may want to come back to you, Craig, real, for a moment, maybe Christie. Last speaker, Jamie. Okay, Jamie's not here. Anybody on the council have any questions?
I don't know if people have comments or anything, but I'd like to make a motion to recess to close session.
I think we had one more speaker. The slip didn't make it, but...
Last speaker slip I have is for Jamie O'Teal.
I'd like to call up Craig Foster.
Okay, I didn't see Craig Foster's.
Oh, that was the one we couldn't read. Oh. I'm a teacher.
The schools guy, we can't read your writing, Mr. Schools guy.
Goodness, even Karen couldn't read my writing.
Nobody could read this.
So congratulations, 15th Malibu City Council. I wish you wisdom, I wish you strength, I wish you leadership. Sorry, I wish you strength, I wish you wisdom, I wish you leadership, I wish you the best of luck in what's ahead of you. I thank the 14th City Council for all your support and everything you've done, particularly on behalf of the children of Malibu, the families of Malibu, the public school students of Malibu. Thank you, all of you who've been mayors, most recently Mayor Mullen, or ex-Mayor Mullen now. And particularly, I am here to thank Laura Rosenthal and Lou Lamont. As I think back, as I watch tonight, there's not been a time when Laura and Lou haven't been on the dais in my political memory, that there's not a time in the struggle for world class public schools in Malibu that they have not been to the fore. The very first meeting out of which Amps grew was organized by Laura Rosenthal in 2010, when it seemed to me she must have been forever on the city council, but it would have been months at that point. Laura's been on every committee, has climbed every mountain, gathered petitions to separate the school district in the early 2000s. She's been fighting for this dream of world class Malibu schools for, I'm going to say forever, and Laura's going to yell at me later for saying that, but forever. And the hours, the time, the caring, the love that she put in. Lou Lamont has been, as he always is, and as we saw in the conversations about rehabs, a beyond tenacious. He has worked hard. I commend him. Now that he has extra time, if anybody needs good advice, I strongly recommend that you talk to Lou Lamont. He is a source of wisdom and clarity that is second to none. So I'm here to say thank you to all of you, but particularly to my friends Laura and Lou, Laura and Lou, for everything you've done for me and for the kids of Malibu in your eight years on city council. eight years on city council and before. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you. Okay, you want to run, start that, Skylar?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to recess to close session.
So there's cake next door, I understand. And meanwhile, the city council will recess to close session pursuant to government code section 549569D1 to discuss the item that's listed on the post-it agenda.
We don't need a second. We'll just head on over. We'll be right back, folks.